All right. Welcome, everybody, to this special board meeting for December 9th, 2024. We're going to start the call. Kinsey? McCoy?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Lee? I'm not sure who is going to be joining us or not. Becker?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Okay. Um, we have a number of action items. We're going to just go right through those. Brian?
I move that the issuance of the superintendent contract to Vicki Byer for the term November 11th, 2024 to June 30th, 2026, unless terminated sooner pursuant to the provisions contained in the contract for the amount of $231,750 prorated, and that such contract shall supersede the 2024-2025 interim superintendent contract between the Board and Vicki Byer as presented, be approved.
Second?
Any questions or discussion? All right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Laura and Rick, are you able to vote online?
Um, I'm having a problem here, so just put me down as a yes.
All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
You don't want to... Nope. All right, we're going to move on.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second?
Any questions? Any discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
All right, moving on to C.
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second?
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
I move that the retirement of staff as presented be approved.
Second?
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried. The result of the individual Board member votes here is follows.
Okay, I would entertain a moment... A motion to adjourn.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Crossen, yes. Gerlach, yes. Mills, yes. Lyerly, yes. McCoy, yes. Becker abstained.
Okay. Um... Now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to... I move that we adjourn and take a 10-minute recess before we start our next meeting.
Second?
Um, do we need to vote, or all in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to just take a brief break here for everybody. All right. Thank you for your patience, buddy. I'd like to welcome you to our December 9th, 2024 work session. And we're going to start with roll call. Kinsey? Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Lee? Um, I'm not sure if who is joining us tonight remotely. So, okay. Um... Next on the agenda... Oh, wait a minute. Um, we have two students joining us at the table. Can you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name's Andres Mora. I'm a senior at Preble High School, and I'm the Green Bay Intercity Student Council President.
Hi, my name is Paige Miller. I'm a sophomore at Preble High School.
Well, welcome. All right, the next on the agenda is the public forum. Is there anybody in the audience who would care to speak? I don't think we have anybody tonight. Okay, then we're going to move on to referendum updates. Hi, Kale. You're still a little bit new, and not everyone knows you, so if people are watching on... Can you go ahead and introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, Kale Polczynski, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you.
Um, so I just have a brief update. Not too much more from last meeting. These will get probably a little more in detail as we continue on with the 24 referendum. But we basically have three active 22 referendum projects in construction, the remainder being in design. And actually, we'll be bringing forward two design contracts in regards to the 22 referendum during the board meeting on the 15th. That will address Sullivan project for HVAC, as well as Howell Elementary HVAC. As for the 22 referendum projects currently in construction, we're nearing the end of this group, the first one being Preble Interior Renovations in addition. The commons and classroom area is scheduled to be complete January 2nd. The auditorium is scheduled to be complete January 6th with staff training already beginning this month. The remaining piece of that would be furniture delivery, targeting over winter break, having that ready when staff and students return. Uh, the second I'll speak to is the West High School exterior and stadium renovations. That project is complete, other than our grandstand, which is ongoing, I'll say. Still trying to make some progress yet this winter, but that will likely head into spring for final completion. And then Greenhouse is complete. They are beginning training on December 11th for staff and community for that. The West Interior Renovations, we spoke a little bit about this in detail last time. So that is now scheduled for occupancy for performance on January 7th. There will be a student performance January 7th through the 9th. Final completion, though, is scheduled until January 17th. That training for staff is starting December 10th. And as we look back at the delays in that project, I believe it was brought up about the flooring being delayed. That was resolved by our contractor and did not cause any further delays in the project. So those delays do stem back to the initial delay of the historic restoration of the project. Any questions on those construction updates?
Right.
When you talk about the auditorium at Preble being fished and the same one at West, you talked about staff training. Is that... So staff is becoming familiar with the lighting, the sound, and things like that inside the auditorium?
Correct. Different components of the stage and lighting, like you said, control boards, things like that.
Yes.
So with that new lighting, the new sound at a lot of our schools, it's going to help out with our community theater that takes place from our schools and concerts and everything else like that, which obviously is open to the public, and we are entering musical and concert season. So anyone that's watching this, it'd be an excellent opportunity once they're up and running to see what they've invested in and how our students are showcasing that.
I just happened to be in the auditorium at West, I don't know, maybe two or three weeks ago now, and they were taking the new seats out of boxes and installing them, and they're just such an enormous upgrade at West. Those old seats were quite uncomfortable and desperate needs, so that was really nice to see that. All right. Did you have any further updates?
No, just for the 24 referendum, I'll just quickly wrap that up. Just continuing design. We did end up receiving final bids for not referendum-related, but it's going to be adjacent, referendum-adjacent, I'll call it, for the Washington roof. So we will be also bringing that forward at the next board meeting as well to award that project, to start that as soon as we can.
Okay. Did anyone have any other questions regarding the referendum updates? All right. Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to the education update. And Lynn and Brian? And the Head Start Youth Apprentice Positions Transfer?
So we have some people coming up to discuss. So Vicki, I'll take this one.
Okay, Head Start has been utilizing youth apprenticeship for the past year, and they've found great value in it, and their request... Well, they have the ability within their budget to transfer the $11,000 for youth apprentice from district funds into the Head Start budget. So the request is for the Board to approve that transfer.
Okay. Any further... Any questions? Okay, what I was asking before was who was going to facilitate this section, that's all. So, all right, then we're... Yeah, go ahead.
Moving on to the annual progress report.
You guys can come up.
We have a group of people coming up. And David will be facilitating this.
We have members from our ed team here, education team, going to have them introduce themselves, and we're going to take the Board through a brief slide deck highlighting a few things from the annual progress report that's linked in the Board Doc's agenda. Shana, can we begin with you, please?
Good evening. Shana Pochesk, Elementary Director.
Hi, Jess Van Anhuvel, Associate Director of Assessment and Data.
David Johns, Associate Superintendent.
Angela Combe, Director of Curriculum.
Toni Lucia, Associate Director of ML, Multilingual Learners.
Jen Tremblay, Associate Director of Bilingual Programs and the Multilingual.
Jen Tremblay, Associate Director of Bilingual Programs in the Multilingual Learner Department.
Good evening, everyone. Jackie Houser, Director of Special.
And I am Ingrid Parker, Director of Engagement and Inclusion. Thanks for having us.
All right, thanks, everybody. The product that, well, let's start with the mission. Sorry, let's ground in the mission. As a reminder, we educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. This is the fourth year that we've put together an annual progress report that covers primarily the academic portion of the work that we do as a district towards meeting the district goal as set forth by the Board of Education. We also include in the annual progress report information about technology, safety and security, professional learning that's developed, the professional learning plan is developed based on what we're seeing in this annual progress report, so it's all linked to that, and school success plans. So this team in front of you and their peers who weren't able to join us tonight spend all year looking through this data and tracking it to determine where do we see areas that are in need of improvement, and what can we do collectively as district office team to support our schools? Again, the entire goal is focused on student success within our district. So we're going to tonight highlight the outcomes, some of the outcomes from the 23-24 school year. The delay, by the way, in putting this together is because DPI does not release the final numbers until mid-November, mid-November, which is why we wait until December to review it with you. In the future, we will have the annual progress report actually link to the strategic priorities that the board puts forward. So it'll be easier to follow, I think, moving forward. In addition, we'll be utilizing board work sessions to regularly update you on progress towards these goals. And then lastly, the overall goal of this work that we put into the annual progress report is continued transparency with the public and with the Board of Education, our parents and our students. We don't hold anything back. You will see the good and the bad in that report, and that's purposeful because we know that we can't solve the problems that are impacting our students' ability to be successful if we do it in isolation. So we share this with you and with the community and hope that we can continue to collaborate for student success. I feel like I'm pointing this right at your head. Okay, some of the highlights. The class of 2023 increased the ACT composite score for the first time in three years, and they closed the gap with the statewide average. This number isn't where we want it to be, but it's headed in the right direction. So we went from 16.9 to 17.2, and your class is going to increase that, right? No pressure. No pressure. We are seeing progress in both ELA and math. There was board adopted curriculum changes last year, and we are seeing that progress, and David Johnson and his team will be providing updates to the board very soon on that. Sorry, Laura. This number hasn't been finalized yet. We just saw it last week for the first time, so we need confirmation from DPI, but the preliminary numbers show that our graduation rate has increased. Oh, went too far. From 84.7% to 87.6%. That's for the four-year cohort. The number of students taking college credits is increasing, and the number of students that graduate with zero college credits is decreasing. So we're headed in the right direction in that one as well. You've heard this one before, but industry certification has increased by 28%. And of note, this is an unduplicated number. It doesn't reflect students that have earned multiple certificates. Goodness. Volunteers in our schools, this is a great indicator of how much this community is dedicated to the success of our district. They hit over 30,000 hours last school year. Because of Jackie and her team's work in special education, we are no longer identified by DPI as being disproportionate disproportionate for any of the disability areas. That took a lot of work. Post-high school outcomes, again, for students with disabilities. They survey these students every year, right, Jackie? Can you share a little bit about this survey?
So it actually falls as one of our indicators, and part of our indicators is that they, when students leave, we keep information on them, and we check to see what they're doing after school. So we ask if they're, if they're employed, if they're attending a post-secondary, if they're in the military, and we gather all that information, and we do that with one representative from each high school that reaches out to the different, to all of our students to gain that information. And you can see that we've had a pretty high success rate. We've been doing this in Green Bay for a long time. A lot of people had done it through St. Norbert's, but I know it's probably about 15 years back for sure, if not more, that we've been gathering it, and we've been seeing an increase in our students being successful in educational courses, post-secondary options.
And that ties directly into the presentation that you'd made earlier this year about transition planning and the work that our high school staff is doing, and as well as middle school on getting those plans ready, correct?
So that leads into here, because as we're planning for students in those from 14 and older, and we're planning for the services they need, we lay out the coursework that they're going to be attending. We plan for those skills that they're going to need for employability, and all that gets laid out each year along the plan to hopefully have this high success rate for our students with disabilities. Yes, Brian?
326 students in grades one through 12, born outside of the United States, enrolled for the first time in US schools in our district. And Tony, I'm not going to quiz you, but the number was much smaller the year before. Do you remember by how much?
100, 196.
So just to make sure, we have 196 more students this year?
So this year, we're, well, for 23-24, it was 326. For the year prior to that, it was 196.
Okay, so about 130 or so additional students in just that one year from outside the United States. Okay.
And Tony and her team coming up before the end of the school year will appear before the board to talk about their programming. Surprise, Tony. We'll stick on multilingual learners just for a minute. 24.5% of our students, 24.5% of our students are multilingual learners. If you remember, yeah.
Will you please define multilingual learner?
So a multilingual learner is any student who is coming to our district who may speak a language in addition to English or who is coming that might be new to the country, or we have students who enroll where their families might be already living in the United States, but they might speak a language other than English at home. So when the student enrolls, they might speak that language primarily, they might speak that language and English. So it's kind of a spectrum, but that's a multilingual learner.
And so if I can follow up, then they are getting, like, I mean, how does that impact their education in the school on a day-to-day basis?
Yeah, so multilingualers in the district will get either bilingual services or English as a second language services. And so those students, I can speak for English as a second language, the services that they're getting, they are enrolled in the universal curriculum. We're giving them additional supports for their language development. So the teachers, the social workers, all the people are coming around them to help provide them English language support to meet their academic needs. And then for the students that we recommend bilingual programming for, we support them again with the universal curriculum, but we utilize Spanish and English for instruction and support, and that starts as early as 4K and goes through eighth grade. We have that option.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, okay. This might be on your slide, but I always like to hear how many languages are spoken in the district?
So for 23-24, including English, we had 35, but it's always moving. We have students enrolling every day from other countries who speak different languages, so that's kind of a moving target. But 23-24 was 35. It's closer to 40, I think, today.
I had the opportunity to attend the Mung New Year's celebration at Edison, and a person that was up from the rural area of the state came up and was asking me why we were having this celebration and things like that. He was throwing, he was participating in the bags contest, and he was shocked when I said we have, I'm glad I was right, I told him 35 languages spoken in the district and all of the other parts, and it's great to hear that. So, you know, our public and our district recognizes we got a lot going on, and we're doing well with a lot of students. So, thank you.
I was just going to add that the bulletin board right out across the hall lists all the languages as of the beginning of this school year. I know that kind of changes over time, but if you want to see them while they're all out there, I'm represented.
I love that board.
I think it's a great idea. It's good to have a visual. Okay, our district offers the AVERAGE program, and last year we had 52 seniors, and of the 52, 100% of them met the four-year college entry requirements. 90% completed their FAFSA form, and 70% of them ended up enrolling in either a two or a four-year college that first fall after graduation, and that's one of the goals of the program. The summer school program from 2023, or would this be from 2024? Is this the most recent? Does anybody at the table know if it's the most recent? I think this would have been the last, just 2024. Okay, so I have the wrong number up there. This is the last one that we had ESR funds for. So the data that you will see from the summer school, regardless, will not look the same moving forward. We will have to make adjustments to summer school offerings because the ESR funds did conclude. David, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, as our plans for summer school are unfolding for this upcoming summer, I actually think that, given the way summer school is funded and continued interest in summer school, along with consolidating some sites, we'll be able to explore some policies to be able to offer more contact time for high school students especially, which would put in play the opportunity to earn two-half credits in summer school. So I'm not sure what the impact on overall summer school attendance is going to be, but we're certainly going to create conditions for more students to earn more credits.
And I was going to say, and that is a great opportunity for kids, for students to be able to explore by taking that, I think it's personal finance and FIAID over the summer to kind of explore more than what they would have usually had at that point, so.
As well as workshop some of our newly released online courses for high schoolers. It's a great opportunity to do that as well.
And a couple of the highlights then from this last summer program, 724 continuous progress in credit recovery enrollments, more than 926 credits were earned through new coursework, approximately 4140 students enrolled in summer school, and 31 ended up graduating because of that extra time that they needed. I'm not sure why this is doing that. There we go. And the last one we wanted to highlight, because we haven't talked a lot about this at the board table, but we will be coming forward soon with more information. We do have had over 1,100 students last school year that were identified as McKinney-Vento or homeless at some point during this school year. Wanted to share that with the board because we do track that, and we do some really great work to help support those students. Does anybody from the team want to highlight any part of, I know I didn't prepare you for that, but do you want to highlight any part that I might have missed? Let me turn it over to you for questions.
Any questions from the board? Rick?
Just got one about this whole question about the impact that Act 20 is going to have on summer school and summer school attendance. Is it too early to start at least speculating on what that's going to do?
Some of the technology-based resources that our students are working with, I've mentioned Lexia a few times at the board table, actually gives us some really compelling prediction data about where a student might be at the end of the year, and so we're starting to pay attention to that in terms of what we need to prepare for. That would go into effect the summer following this summer. And the letter of the law speaks to third graders rising to fourth grade who have not yet been successfully, who have not successfully completed a reading plan. And so what our summer school programming looks like, or at least options within summer school programming for students where we can really drill into that reading support, would go into effect, it's always been a part of summer school, but with much more intentionality over the next couple of years.
James, do you have any questions? I do have, oh, sorry, I do have one. On our draft, we have on page eight, the Career Ready Indicators, and it talks about community service and workplace learning and the percentages that go through that. I know co-curricular participation has dropped a bit. And one of the, one of the challenges that we have is transportation, and I know that's been an ongoing effort. Is there any way that the board can support figuring out transportation so more students are able to participate in co-curricular activities, especially when you have different schools hosting different events that we can, I know that we have a partnership with Green Bay Metro of getting busing there, but is there anything that the board can do to help with that, particularly the transportation part? I don't need an answer now, just, it's one of those things that we'd be interested in seeing what we can do to increase the numbers for that.
Yeah, to that, I think that opens up the whole question of what is behind these declining numbers. To some extent, there's a national trend that matches what we're seeing here. There's competing values and the importance of work after school, maybe more so than ever for our students, and so transportation is one among several. I think transportation, not only for co-curricular participation, but also for some of our dual credit opportunities that you almost have to be in the right school at the right time to be able to take advantage of, and we don't want to have any of those barriers. Transportation plays a factor in that as well. So, yes, we will be talking and asking the board for more and more insights and support around helping our kids get where they need to be to get the greatest experience they can.
Also, do we know how many of our, and I don't know if it breaks down at all, but how many of our students that are receiving special education services in some areas are participating in co-curricular activities? Is there a way we could find that easily?
Sorry, I think we would be able to break that down with an infant in campus because we do keep track of our extracurriculars that way, and we also do have the data in there. We have it in the past, but I think that's very accomplishable.
That's also a perfect example of a future state when we're talking about one of our strategic domains of being a thriving student body, that we would want to talk about that as a very important measurable and observable dimension of that.
And there's so many studies that show that students are involved in things, have better attendance, they have better academics success, their time management, their career readiness is there. So any opportunity we can to increase that participation obviously is going to help the district as a whole and most importantly, our students. So it'd be interesting to see if there's, where that relates with it. So, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And I'm next. We're going to be talking about strategic planning and Portrait of a Graduate update. Thanks, Kinsey.
I feel like this is a really well-timed update in light of reviewing last year's annual report because it's an opportunity to share and celebrate some progress that's been made since the summer and a great foundation for us to move forward in. I'm joined by Ingrid Parker-Hill to share the celebration and the launch and the reveal of the Portrait of a Graduate. And board colleagues, Rick and Lynn, will then make some connections to where we're going with strategic planning and, and how we're off and running with that. So this work of Portrait of a Graduate is incredibly exciting. It began last July. In the time since we started this with a real community grassroots effort, I've had opportunities to be out in different spaces, really across the country, networking with large and small school districts who every time the Portrait of a Graduate comes up in conversation, it turns out to be such a unifying and grounding experience for those school districts. And it just builds so much more excitement about what this can be and what this can mean for us in Green Bay. What you're going to see today is not only the ideas that came from thousands of data points that have informed this process, but you're also going to see a visualization and a graphic that has been created by our incredible team and is the start of a multi-pronged communication launch that will be flooding the media over the next several days. So excited to share with you our Portrait of a Graduate. Here we see a graphic that identifies the five elements of the portrait. These would be the large clustered areas that from hearing from thousands of students and families and neighbors and employers in our community, they have said that essentially these are the areas that we really need to focus on and ensure that our graduates, when they walk across the stage, not only have the credits that they legally require to be considered graduates, but really this is what they need to embody to be successful, not only in school, but in life beyond school. And so here we see three young people shown at various stages of their life indicated by height, and then the five actions of the portrait. Now those key words aren't really enough to guide us into aligning and further defining. And so there's some public-facing descriptions of each of those. I'm going to share what I'm most excited about and then I'll invite Ms. Ingrid to do the same. And then we'll transition this into where this fits in the strategic planning. What I'm really excited about is that in the hundreds of examples that I've seen from districts around the country, our portrait is truly personalized and it's truly directed to how we want our students to see themselves and the kind of agency that we want to build within them. So our categories of academic achievers, communicators and connectors, personal architects, leaders and teammates, and empowered navigators speak to the person. It doesn't speak to the trait. It talks about the person and who they will become. And you'll see in the descriptive language there just a little bit more expanded with that. Ms. Ingrid, what excites you the most about this?
Thank you for asking. What excites me most about this is this is not just a Green Bay public school effort. This is a community effort. And so we are positioning ourselves to be collaborative partners with our community. And so this is just the start of a new era. And so I'm excited about that.
There's much work still to come. It's only just beginning. And the first opportunity we have to bring it to life is to work on ways that it can inform our strategic planning process. Mr. Cross, and I'll transition to you if you'd like me to.
Thank you. To get a visual of where this is positioned as it relates to the strategic plan, think about a circle within the circle. This is the nucleus of what it is that we are working on with our strategic plan to achieve the desired results and to align and focus everyone on a common definition of an end state or an end product. In this case, the educated student. And so all of the work that we're doing with the strategic plan has this at the center of everything we do. All of the domains that you're going to, that we're going to work with as we define our strategic plan have this as the, as the visionary end state. And now this has the, the type of clarity that a vision should have that would allow us in the, and even in the absence of any specific instructions, this would be the thing to orient everyone on as we move towards our objectives. Lynn? Okay.
Okay. So we saw this slide before. And just a reminder that we are here down at the bottom there. That is what we're calling our horizon one. And that is the first thing that we're going to define. Where are we? And we're going to define it in terms of what can be measured, not just, you know, how do we feel or how does it look, but what measurable characteristics can we see here? Then if you look up at, I don't know where the pointer is, so I'm not going to try to point. But if you look up at the top of the mountain, it says our destination. Remind you that that is what we call horizon three, and we're going to jump to horizon three next. So after we define carefully who we are and where we are, then we're going to go to the top of the mountain and define in measurable terms where we want to be. And then remember the part in between is where we make that path go from where it is now up that mountain. And that is horizon two. And that is the part that is going to be our work. So this, remember, we talked about a domain map last time. And so our senior administration has said that what we're working toward is an interdependent school system optimized to deliver results for our students. And of course, now we know what kind of results those are about being an achiever and a communicator and a teammate and a leader and that sort of thing. Okay. Then they have identified five key domains that they say will very strategically impact the, the accomplishment of that. And they are academic excellence, operational excellence, a thriving student body, a thriving workforce, and family and community engagement. The next step was to identify who would be the leader for each domain. And so those leaders are Angela Cole for academic excellence. For operational excellence, we have Kale Polczynski and Angie Robley co-leading that. Oh, what did I do? Okay. Well, anyway, sorry about that, Mike. There you are. Thriving workforce, Mike Freeze will be leading that. He's back. And for thriving student body will be Katie Sulzer. And for family and community engagement, of course, it will be Ingrid Parker-Hill. So the next step then was for them to identify who their team will be. And we're going to look at that in just a minute. Each one is to have a team. And then together with their team, and they had to have their team decided by last Friday. So we are prepared to tell you who will be on each team today. And then after that, the next step will be for them to look at their specific domain. So for example, Angela Coleman, her team are going to focus on academic excellence. And those little circles, remember, those are the critical elements that will feed into academic excellence. So in other words, they'll say, these are the things we're going to measure. These are the things we'll measure now. These are the things we'll measure in horizon three. And so each one, each team will do that. And then we'll have our domain map. So we have our domain teams. And David put these together for us. And he pointed out to me that if you see something that is italicized that is an outside, external person or organization, and I'm not going to try to read these to you because I can hardly read them myself. But we can maybe get a copy of this for the board at some point, you know, written copy. So we know who are, so these will be the people. They will focus on their own domain. They're not going to all try to do everything. And so this is now a reminder of what our timeline is for the strategic planning. So by December 20th, we are asking that the team leaders to work with their teams to fill out all those little circles. And they might have three, they might have five, it's up to them. They don't all have to have exactly the same number. And then by January 10th, we're going to ask them to have measured horizon one, where we are now in terms of each one of those critical elements. And then by January 13th, they'll have another update. So we'll be able to tell you those things hopefully at that time. And by the end of January, they will have gone to horizon three up the mountain. And they will have said, this is how it's going to look when it's successful, and this is how we'll measure it. Then they're going to go to horizon two in February. And after one month, we're going to ask them to have horizon two defined. In other words, how do we get from here to there? What are going to be the, the key steps? And each team will be working only in their domain. And then we'll have the plan ready. And on March 10th, they should be able to present it to us. And on March 24th, hopefully the board will be able to approve the plan and then we'll be ready to act. And I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, that once we put that horizon two into play, we're talking about three to five years of working to get that path up the mountain. That's it.
Any questions? All right. Laura?
Don't really have a question. I just want to express some appreciation for the work you guys have been doing. It's been, I, I've been part of some parts of it, but not fully. And every time I get a report, I get all excited about the future of our district. So you must be doing something right. So I just want to say thank you.
And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that Rick and I will be stepping back a little bit now. And this, the staff is really going to take this on. This is not going to be board-directed, but staff-directed.
James, do you have a question?
Well, Laura beat me to the punch. I was going to come off mute and share my appreciation with Rick and Lynn and those others that have done this. I really appreciate the amount of thoughtfulness that is demonstrated in the presentation and, and the deck. I'm looking forward to seeing it progress.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys. We're going to now transition into operations. Rick, I think you're facilitating that.
Yep. Yes, we have one agenda item for operations tonight. It is the 2025-26 school calendar proposal.
Okay. And Mike Freeze is going to join me. We co-facilitate the calendar committee. So we're going to talk through some of the recommendations. This is the time of year that we bring calendar forward for the next school year. And I know our parents and staff are anxious to get this approved so they can start planning their vacations. The calendar committee is made up of teachers representing each grade level and a variety of courses so that we can be thinking of the nuances that are involved in when we, when we put together a calendar. We started meeting in September, anywhere from two to three times a month. And we base our decisions on a variety of things, but it also includes taking a look at model calendars and what do our neighbors have in place already so that we can in some ways coincide with them. This particular year, we sent out a survey right at the start of the school year. We surveyed parents, guardians, and staff. And that helped drive our recommendation that we're bringing to the board. Two of the questions that surprised us, but we will honor because we asked, when do you want school to begin? So we asked people to let us know if they wanted to start before September 1st, which would have required a waiver from DPI. They overwhelmingly said no, we would like to begin in September. That, that summer break was very important to them. And the other one that surprised us, or at least me, I won't speak for you, Mike, but I think some of the, the committee members were surprised when we asked them the placement of spring break. Many of them wanted to attach it to what we call a floating holiday, but it's actually Good Friday. And we haven't done that. And so we're attaching it for the 25-26 school year. Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about the other dates? Or do you want me to cover?
I have a case of too many tabs open on the laptop at the moment. Once again, excuse me, if you can, if this is too soon, wave me off here. But we also have taken a look at when fall recess occurs relative to when we hold parent teacher conferences as well as elementary teacher workdays. So for example, there are some, some options for middle school and high school daytime and elementary school optional. Parent teacher conferences on November 26th as proposed. I believe we recently ran that this year. So that's very similar to what we did this year as well. And the other thing is, as you may recall, our educators are on 191-day contracts and that takes into consideration the fact that they work evening parent teacher conferences each semester. So we always seek to provide what's known as a parent teacher trade-off day in each semester. And so then that is reflected in, in the schedule as always as well. We recognize that parent teacher conferences have evolved a little bit over the years, but that still remains a valuable opportunity based on the feedback and input. Two other things I'd like to mention also. Two other things I'd like to mention also, I believe you, well, we're very grateful to the work that Mandy Huro in Vicky's office. She does the large balance of the data gathering and collection and organizing so that we feel that we can be successful in those meetings. And secondly, the group that participates in the construction and the input is reflective of all employee groups. So we have transportation there. We have technology. We have the GBEA representation. So it's a very diverse group that provides us input each year.
Thank you. And then this calendar still has 174 face-to-face student days. That's consistent with what we've had in the past. And that's with two built-in snow days. So we can have two days and not have to make those up. Once we hit that third, our plan would be to go to asynchronous learning for our students so that we don't extend the school year. Under would have the students end on June 5th, a Friday. And then teachers would come back the following Monday to finalize their grades. Okay, that's the calendar.
Any questions from anyone?
Yes, Brian.
Saw the elementary and middle school teachers out there. I looked October 31st as a Friday. All the sugar should be out of the system by the time they come back on November 2nd. So that's good.
Lynn?
I'm kind of baffled by this. Do you go through this every year? There isn't just like a standard school year?
You know, every year that I've had been privileged to be part of the committee, Vicky says, this year, let's see if we can get a couple of years knocked out. And, and there's been something unique each of the past five or six years that has precluded us or prevented us from fully mapping out multiple years at a time. So Vicky, I don't think, I think you'd like to add, this year, for example, the draft, the NFL draft created a circumstance, right? So.
Yeah, and we, we want to, I believe we have the ability to at some point create the perfect calendar that works best for staff, students, and parents and guardians. We aren't there yet. But I'll give you an example. We used to have early release days. And we heard from parents and guardians and even students that this isn't working for us. So we, over the years, slowly cut back to the point where we have zero now. But we can still make improvements.
Laura?
Every time we go through this each year, I reminded of, the first year I was on the school board, and I, I had no idea how complex this process is and how many people have to have some input. And just incredibly complicated and also incredibly important because so many families are looking to this to, to plan for their fam, their individual families and their individual students. It affects, it affects everything. It affects a lot of things in our community as well. People schedule according to our schedule. It's, it's a, it's a big deal. So again, thank you for all the hard work that you put into this every year.
And Lynn?
Could you please explain to me September 2nd? It's the first day of school. And some people have in-person instruction. And some people have asynchronous instruction. To me, asynchronous means not at the same time, but it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with in-person or not. Is that digital? And what is it? And why do some have it this way and some have it that way?
We received feedback three or four years ago that that transition, plus the data will indicate, the transition from eighth to ninth grade and fifth to sixth grade is very difficult. And while we offer in the summer opportunities for incoming sixth graders and incoming ninth graders to experience their school, it's not always well attended. And we, we learned we can do better. We give those students an opportunity to experience their new high school, new middle school without the other students there.
So then the seventh, eighth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders are doing what?
This is time that they will spend either reviewing course expectations or the teachers will provide them with a simple assignment that they will pick up when they go to register. Yeah, they're correct.
Brian?
Be interesting to hear from our two students, how valuable you find that both as student leaders now, but also when you're a freshman, especially with both of you going to Preble, which is our largest school. So.
Yeah, so my freshman year, the asynchronous thing, I don't believe was an option. Like, I don't believe they had it. But last year, when I was a linker leader, I attended school during that asynchronous day to help freshmen get situated around the school. And it's definitely really helpful to be able to show the freshmen around the school without having to worry about other students or just the busy, like Preble is such a huge school to have the, all, all four grades there at the same time for a freshman can be really intimidating. So it's really helpful from what I've seen as a linker leader to have students be like shown around their school by upperclassmen leaders on that day.
For me, last year was my freshman year. And I came from a smaller school. I came from Leonardo da Vinci. So it was a big transition for me to go to such a big school and when not knowing a lot of people. And it was very helpful for me to like find where all my classes are and get advice from upperclassmen and see the different kind of clubs I could join on that day.
I have one question about high school graduation dates and why they're not reflected on this schedule.
It takes a little time to get that. We've been coordinating with the Crest Center and a couple other locations. So it takes a little time to coordinate with them.
But you're saying, once that is, then that will be an addendum to this? Okay, got it. Yes, Lynn?
Is, is it the case, do I understand correctly, that some of our high schools are on semesters and one of our high schools on trimester? And what is the reason for that?
Yes, East High School Administration came forward five or so years ago and requested an opportunity to transition to a trimester schedule. And they brought forward some justification for it. I will share with the board that it is our belief, David, I'm going to speak for you. It is our belief that it would be best for the district that our high schools operate on. It's easier to share, students can take classes at different schools more readily. And traveling staff, it can fit their schedules more readily as well. So we're going to continue to explore that actually with a branch off of the calendar committee and bring that forward to the board within the next two years.
Brian? Okay, any other questions? James, do you have a question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. And that's the last agenda item for operations.
Great, thank you, Rick. Next, we're doing Palestine Governance. Andrew, are you facilitating this? Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we have four items. First one is the revisions to Rule 433 intra-district transfer procedures.
Good evening. I am presenting this on behalf of the education team and the central registration team that have worked on this and have made recommendations based on the data that we have gathered over the prior few years with respect to our inter-district transfer policy, or I'll refer to it as IDT. IDT allows students to attend, Green Bay students to attend a school in the district that is not their home school, their home attendance area school. We want to be able to provide as much flexibility and options to our families as possible. And so this is a great opportunity for families to find the right fit for their student within the district. The process has been reviewed a number of times since I've been here since 2013. And we've brought a number of revisions trying to find that right mix of allowing choice and flexibility and allowing some certainty here in the district and at our schools for getting kids in their seats at the right time and being ready for them when school starts. What our team has come back to us is they would like to shorten that third window because the, the length of that third window in August is providing a few complications for our schools in order to finalize class lists and create schedules for students who are provided with an opportunity to move to a different school so late in August. And so there's a few other cleanup wording in, in the rule. But other than that, that is probably the biggest change that's being requested within this, this rule.
Part of the reason this was brought forward was a former board member whose child was waiting to find out, am I going to get into this school? And it's really difficult for families to have to wait until the last minute to know whether they've been accepted or not. So I appreciate that the team really dug in. I know this was a lot of work to come to a solution.
Brian?
Do we know offhand how many students intra-district transfer in our district?
The answer is yes. I do not have that with me tonight, but we could follow up with that. I know Nick Berla has that data.
Other, other questions? Go ahead.
Just a comment with this, I think this is one of the strengths of the Green Bay School District, that ability, you know, just the, the sheer scope of our district and size to allow those opportunities. And there's, I'm glad that we just keep addressing this and making sure that we've got strong policy.
Okay, anything else? All right, next we have revisions to board policies and, excuse me, board policies and rules in the 300 and 400 series.
Okay, I'm, yeah, thank you. I, I'm hoping that I can take the people services first, that spreadsheet, and then address the teaching and learning policies after that. Does that work for everybody? So first we have, within the people services policy, the revision to 342.4 programs for children at risk. And we are recommending a revision to that policy and a repeal of the rule. The rule is outdated and is inconsistent with what we are implementing here in the district. And the, any relevant language within that rule, we're just folding into that policy. The policy was changed, obviously, it's almost 20 years old now. And so it was updated to reflect our current reality and the program that we are implementing for children who are deemed at risk. The statute defines at risk for us, and that's the population served.
All right, any questions on the at-risk one? Or others? Okay.
I have a question. And now are we talking about all the others in this group? No, we're not there yet. Okay, thank you.
So you're just looking for at-risk?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, well, go on.
Next is the adoption of policy for 11.4 Education of Children of Military Families. State and federal law governs what a school district needs to do to accommodate the unique needs of children who are in military families. We are currently doing this. We just don't have a policy. And so if families had a question, or here in the district, we didn't, everyone won the lottery tomorrow. We're all, you know, in the Mega bucks drawing and everyone left. We want to make sure that we have a process defined as to what rights and responsibilities are families who have, are in the military.
Okay, any questions there? Okay, then we'll move forward to the next one.
The next is Policy 443, Student Conduct and Discipline. This policy was updated really to more language changes than anything to reflect our philosophy with respect to student conduct and discipline. And the cross-references were also updated. And again, a big thanks to Katie Sulzer and her team for working on these.
Okay, questions here? Any?
One, this is, I have a question or just a comment about the word discipline in here. I guess at its best, it's giving a common definition. But it seems punitive in, in its, in very, and thus being very narrowly defined when you say the word discipline. Because it, it leaves out some, some self-imposed or at least some student-imposed actions that, that manage and moderate their behavior, which is in effect a level of discipline. Are we, are we only talking about discipline in a, in a punitive or in this case, as a consequence? Typically viewed as a consequence. Because I just find that as a very narrow definition of the word discipline.
We are talking about discipline in the context of what the district would issue as a consequence for a student's behavior. So it's not always punitive. It would be corrective as well.
We can talk about this, I guess we can talk about it offline. I'm just. We use the word discipline a lot in, in, in military context as a positive thing. Good order and discipline is referred to quite frequently. And it is, it is, it is taken as a personal responsibility for conduct and behavior that is aligned with the desires and the mission and the mores of that organization. So I, this is the world that I came from. So when I see discipline only used as a, as a matter of correcting behavior or undesirable behavior, I see that. And it's just something that, it's something that we should at least have a broader conversation of the use of that word. Brian?
But I'm like, I agree with what you're saying on it. I think looking at education scope, replacing it, and if we're talking about the same part, I'm looking at purpose of classroom conduct where discipline has struck out and consequences going. I'm looking at the Redline District or version. The consequences, I'm looking at as a positive part of it as well as, as part of a growth. I think, I think it's on the same path. The way I'm interpreting it is similar to what you're saying. I think it's giving it the opportunity for a more positive part of it on there. But I'm interested in, in how else we could wordsmith that. All right, anything else? Okay. So since we're not wordsmithing it here, Rick, you and I can talk and kind of come up with an idea. Okay.
And I would also suggest that we work with Katie Sulzer because this is really beyond a legal issue. I think this is more within her, her context of a philosophical view of discipline here in the district.
James?
Yeah, I wanted to opt into that conversation as well because I recognize that Rick is viewing discipline. And I agree with him as a personal characteristic or personal trait or something that one does and owns where, you know, B does read as, regardless of whether it's corrective, supportive, or punitive, it is an action taken by someone upon the student as it reads. And I do think that there is opportunity to tighten that up and potentially use different words if the policy is to represent an action that the district would take either to support or correct behaviors of the student and not something the student would do for themselves.
Anything else? Okay, I think we're set then with the, the people services and special education ones. And then you
and then you want to go back to the teaching and learning?
Yep, and if you would just give me one moment, I need to grab my computer, because I left that folder in my office.
Yes? Yes, 443. Under definitions, paragraph two, sub-paragraph B, where it says, "Discipline" is underlined. Where it reads, "Discipline is an action that is typically viewed as a consequence." Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Okay, moving over to the teaching and learning side of the House, we have Policy 330, Curriculum Development and Instructional Improvement. And I would like to thank Angie Locom and Eric Kahn for working on these policies and David as well. Angie reviewed Policy 330, minor changes with respect to this policy. Really, the biggest changes is we no longer have those curriculum guides, we have course overviews, so changes to that language, and then updates to the legal references and the cross-references, and some changes in a standards-based curriculum and instruction number five.
Questions?
We are recommending to repeal Policy 360. It is a very short policy and probably obsolete, and the language is included in other areas of the district's policies.
Okay.
And then we have Policy and Rule 361 regarding the selection and reconsideration of textbooks. We are not recommending any changes with respect to Rule 361 with respect to the policy. It was, just had some minor updates to reflect our current practice.
Okay, so that's, that's not going to be anywhere in the changes, it's just mentioned because of updates to the policy?
We started adding in, even though we've reviewed it, and there aren't any changes, we've added on the bottom of the policy, the day of the, the date of the review, so that it doesn't look like 20 years have passed and we haven't even cracked the book on it. The last one is Rule 441.1, Intercity High School Student Council Constitutional Bylaws. There is a request that ICSC brought forward with respect to adding membership for J-Doll and NEW. So the policy, the rule, I'm sorry, was updated to reflect the request to add the membership to the council. I don't know if the students want to speak to that.
Yeah, so originally, we had a request from John Dewey. We've been receiving, I've been receiving a lot of emails from students that were interested in joining, and they wanted to learn more about how they could get onto the council. But unfortunately, due to our previous or current constitution, we couldn't add more members because it was limited. So this amendment that was passed was to increase the members of John Dewey to two voting members and one alternate, so up to three. And then we originally received interest from NEW to add members, but then we received, I believe, last week, an update from the principal that the students were no longer interested. So I believe...
Yeah, we have, and we have an update today that there was a little bit of miscommunication. There, there is interest from NEW, so we want to make sure that they have a spot should they choose to do so. So we're continuing to bring forward that language.
All right, I didn't know that, so, well, that's good, yeah, that's good.
So I'm, I'm glad to see that NEW is, is included here. There is a question of, you know, students' rights to be represented even if in one, at one particular point in time, perhaps no one from a, a smaller school may run. I think that's still, still important, so. And then this reflects, you, so you took a, a vote at your, the vote at your meeting to do this, or is that upcoming right before?
Sorry. So we had a vote at our last meeting. We need to have two-thirds approval from our, from our students in order to approve the amendment. And then after that, we forwarded a new proposed constitution to the board.
All right, anything else? Are you, James, are you, no, okay. Okay. And so those, those memos take us through then everything, although there was B, C, and D that we discussed all at the same time, so. All right, that concludes the policy and governance.
All right, thank you. Brian?
Just wanted to share something as a point of personal privilege, it's not a discussion item, just with the, the timing of it, an activity that would have been on the student council report if they had one, you know, if this had been on their cycle. Green Bay East is doing a fantastic program that they've done before. It's Eats for East, which is a food drive they're doing this week, and it's on their website, so I just wanted to share with the rest of the board members. It's a pretty awesome opportunity. Mr. Vanen-Hooton was on a local radio show promoting and stuff, so I just wanted to share that information. I'm sure it would be on next week, but it would be three days late, so.
Okay. All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.